I want to call to order the November 26, 2013 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. I want to welcome those of you that are here tonight to the council chamber. I also want to welcome those who might be watching us on television, those who might be watching us on the computer, those who might be listening to us on the computer, those who might be listening to us on the radio. This is your city government. We hope that you'll get involved in any way that seems to work for you. We try to get what we're doing out there. Okay, I'm going to ask the clerk to, well, let's see. I guess we're going to have an introduction before we take the roll call tonight.
I'm going to leave it to Mr. Strong since he's a short timer here. Give him a little more face time with the council before he's done.
Well, maybe shorter compared to the person I'm introducing. This is Russ Pamela. He is our new transit operations supervisor. This is a position that works directly with all of our operators who drive our buses for Go Transit. He comes to us from Des Moines where he had about three years of experience in a similar role there. He's very excited about coming to this part of the country and also coming to a smaller system where it's where a lot of hats and he's been assured and has learned that there are a lot of hats to wear. So certainly questions on the operations side, feel free to contact him.
Well, good. Welcome. Also, while you're up there, for those who don't know, Mr. Strong has taken another position. He's going way out west, out to the northwest, return to land of his family and a nice position out there. So we're going to miss him. So welcome you, Russell, and we say goodbye to Mr. Strong. So thank you for your service.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, now we'll have the roll call by the city clerk.
Peck?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Fitzgerald?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Tower?
Here.
Current seven.
I want to ask everybody to rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Prior to tonight's invocation, with Thanksgiving being on Thursday, I'd like to take just a moment for everybody to think for a minute silently about what they're We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask our students to turn around there so people out in television land can see We do appreciate you coming tonight, helping with the pledge of allegiance. But we want to find out a little bit about each one of you. So I'm going to pass the microphone down here and I'd like each one of you to tell us what your name is, tell us where you go to school, what grade you're in, and as Mr. Peck indicated, we have Thanksgiving coming up in a couple of days and people out here were asked to silently indicate what they're thankful for. And I'm going to ask each one of you maybe to indicate something that you happen to be thankful for.
My name is Anna Casalafa. I go to Washington Elementary School. I'm in fifth grade and I am thankful for pets and family.
Hi, my name is Emma Schuttenhelm. I go to school at Washington Elementary. I'm in fifth grade. I'm thankful for my friends, family, and my pet.
She goes to Pinklin Elementary School and she is in first grade.
Hi, I'm Izzy. I go to Pinklin Elementary School. I'm in fifth grade and I'm thankful for my family and pets.
Okay, thank you and appreciation. I do have a certificate for each one of you. There you go, Anna. Sophia, here's yours. And Izzy, here's yours. Will you give these people a hand and help? Now you can go home and start helping fix the Thanksgiving meal. Okay, the first item that will pick up on the agenda of business will be a public hearing. And in the public hearing, what I'm going to do is read this three times. If you'd like to speak to the public hearing issue, please feel free to come up to the microphone. It's turned on. Public hearing, resolution 13-506, approve final resolution vacating portions of Soda Creek Drive and Jacktar Road. Second reading, resolution 13-506, approve final resolution vacating portions of Soda Creek Drive and Jacktar Road. Final reading, resolution 13-506, approve final resolution vacating portions of Soda Creek Drive and Jacktar Road. Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the council and ask for a motion and a second on resolution 13-506.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to take the roll call vote on resolution 13-506.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Current seven.
Okay, that takes us to citizen statements to the council. This is when people have an opportunity to come up if there's something that concerns them that's going on in the city or if there's something that's going on well and you'd like to comment on that, you have some time to come up to the microphone to do so. Essentially, if you come up, please give us your name and address. Limit your comments to no more than five minutes. Speak directly to the council. This is not the time to speak to anything on tonight's agenda and no electioneering. I see no one coming forward. Okay, that takes us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is made up of items that are viewed to be non-controversial, provided by the administration, and unless either a council member or a citizen wants a particular item removed from the consent agenda, for separate consideration, the consent agenda will be voted on as a package. The process is, I'm going to read through the consent agenda, the whole consent agenda, and if there's an item on there to which you would like to speak, please come up to the microphone when I read that particular item. After citizens have had an opportunity to speak, we will bring it back to the council for some discussion and then possible approval of the consent agenda. Okay, approval of bills presented by the finance director. Approval of cash report for October 2013. Receipt and filing of museum board minutes from October 3, 2013. Receipt and filing of common council minutes from November 12th and 20th, 2013. Resolution 13-507, approve purchase of water meters and transmitters from HD Supply Waterworks for 2014 for the water utility division. Resolution 13-508, approval of engineering services agreement with CH2M Hill Engineers, Inc. for construction management services for wastewater treatment plant control system, influent pumping, and aeration blowers upgrade. Resolution 13-509, approval of amendment to engineering services agreement with AECom Technical Services, Inc. for construction management services for city hall parking lot. Resolution 13-510, approval of change order number two for public works contract number 13-6 with Aldecks Concrete, Inc. for concrete sidewalk new and reconstruction. Resolution 13-511, approved change order for number one for public works contract number 13-08, and approve agreement for purchase of materials with Myron Construction Company, Inc. for the public works field operations facility. Resolution 13-512, resolution appoint a paying agent and registrar with respect to $9 million eighty thousand, $9 million eighty thousand aggregate principal amount of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series 2013B, $4 million one hundred and seventy-five thousand aggregate principal amount of sewer system revenue bonds, series 2013D, and $3 million seven hundred and eighty-five thousand aggregate principal amount of water system revenue bonds, series 20E, 2013E, and related matters. Resolution 13-513, approve 2014 business improvement district operating plan and budget. Resolution 13-514, approve agreement with InfoVision Software, Inc. for permitting software. Resolution 13-515, removal of member on Landmarks Commission due to excessive absences. Resolution 13-516 has been withdrawn by those who wanted to put it on the agenda, so I guess we'll see it at a later time possibly. Resolution 13-517, approval of special event. And now I'll be looking at special events as I go down here. Resolution 13-517, it's the bid to utilize streets for their December gallery walk course and carriage rides, December 7, 2013. Resolution 13-518, due Trenton to utilize streets for their resolution run, January 1, 2014. Resolution 13-519, Special Olympics Fox Valley area to utilize Menominee Park and city streets for their Polar Plunge and Polar Plunge 5K run, February 14 and 15, 2014. Resolution 13-520, UW Oshkosh Student Recreation to utilize city streets for the Shamrock Shuffle 5K Run Walk, March 15, 2014. Resolution 13-521, Oshkosh Yacht Club to utilize Menominee Park for their 2011 ILYA Championship Regatta, August 14, 15, 16, and 17, 2014. And resolution 13-522, approve operator taxi cab driver and junk collector licenses. I see no citizens coming forward, so I will bring it back to the council to see if there are questions or comments or if anybody wants any particular item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration. Mr. Cummings?
Mr. Mayor, Tower, this is just a question, resolution 13-513. And what I, I'll make more comments about this later towards the end of the meeting, but I would hope that the bid board would work with the city parks department and others to make more of a coordinated effort as to what we do in the city with landscaping and so forth. I've been lucky enough throughout my career to travel throughout, well, most of the world in this country, and I noticed a lot of cities, and again, this goes back to quality of life, there seems to be a very, very much a coordinated effort to how they landscape their gateways of the city, their downtown areas, their parks, but there is a theme in most of these communities. So I'd ask that at some point the parks department get involved because they do a great job with the landscaping and the plantings in our parks.
I'll pass it on. Thank you.
Any other comments or anybody want anything removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'll ask for a motion and a second on the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on any item on the consent agenda? If not, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on the consent agenda as presented.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Current seven.
There were no items removed from the consent agenda, so that takes us to pending ordinances. The first one is ordinance 13-523, repeal and recreate solid waste disposal section 23-7, standards of service for residential areas related to an annual fee for collections of recyclables. This is not the fee itself. It's basically changing the ordinance to allow a fee with respect to this. There will be consideration later on the agenda for actually the addition of a $20 fee, but this does not involve the $20 fee on recycling. Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion at this point? Okay, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on ordinance 13-523.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Current seven.
Ordinance 13-524, repeal and recreate a portion of the sidewalks and sidewalks ordinance, section 25-68, snow removal. Would I like to come forward to speak to that? Seeing no one come forward, bring it back to the council and ask for a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
One question, and since we had snow this afternoon. The question has come up a number of times from citizens as to the 24-hour rule to have things cleaned after the end of a snowstorm. Is there any flexibility in this when the streets are plowed later and stuff is back on the sidewalks again?
That has nothing to do with the end of the snowfall as we read it with the code. We use the National Weather Service to establish the time when the snowstorm stopped.
I understand that, but there are people who clear their sidewalks and then the plow may come through a second time and there's more snow and slush on the sidewalk after it's been cleared once. Is there any flexibility in this at all?
If you're saying, are we out there at 24 hours, the answer is no, because if the snowstorm stops in the middle of the night, we don't start taking calls till the middle of the next night, and so people actually get more than 24 hours. So is there flexibility in that regard? Yes, we can't make it to the exact 24 hours typically because we have to work it around the exact weather situation that we're dealing with. So typically, people get more than 24 hours. They get somewhere between up to two or three days, depending on if it's a weekend or whatever. So you're trying to ask for a specific situation with plowing, but it really depends on the snowstorm. I don't know that we're ever out there at 24 hours. It just doesn't work out that way.
Thank you.
I can tell you that I've had to handle appeals sometimes, and I do take into consideration that type of situation. If, and it's a very, it's a very, very rare event where we're out there that quickly, but if somehow we were, it's all based on complaints, so we take a look at the complaint. But generally, when there's a complaint, it's usually from a neighbor, and if that situation exists, Jackson's a really good example of that type of street that you're talking about, Councilor Cummings. And we take a look at those, and I've waived a fee or two in the past. I don't do a lot of them, so don't everybody think that just because I said that tonight, that, we don't do a lot of them, but those are the types of situations that I take into consideration when I do give those rare waivers.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments on ordinance 13-524? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on ordinance 13-524.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Current seven.
Takes us to ordinance 13-525, approve rezoning 2212 Montana Street from M3 General Industrial to M2 Central Industrial. Would I like to speak to that? Seeing no one come forward, bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Any comments?
Just one.
Yeah?
Just on behalf of the initiative by Mr. Jack Meyer, he contacted me today. He was unable to make the meeting tonight, but he had spoke to council at the last council meeting in support of this, and the planning commission has approved it, so I'm hoping that council will also approve the rezoning of 2212 Montana Street from M3 to M2.
Anything else? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to take the roll call vote on ordinance 13-525.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Current seven.
Takes us to ordinance 13-526, approve rezoning 663 West Third Avenue from R22 Family to M2 Central Industrial. Would I like to come forward to speak to that? Seeing no one come forward, bring it back to the council and ask for a motion and a second on ordinance 13-526.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on ordinance 13-526.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Current seven.
Okay, that takes us to new ordinances. These are, these new ordinances all have to be read at two council meetings. So I will read the ordinance tonight. If you'd like to speak to it tonight, feel free to come up to the microphone and do so. The council will not be voting on these ordinances tonight. There are four of them, which I'm going to read here. They will come up for approval at the next council meeting, so if people want to speak tonight and at the next council meeting, they're perfectly welcome to do so. Mr. Herman indicated somebody spoke to one of the ordinances last time, couldn't be here tonight. Okay, so ordinance 13-527, approval of changes in permit parking in CP Avenue Lot. Ordinance 13-528, approval of loading zone definition and parking regulation changes on Dead Avenue, Eagle Street, Liberty Street, North Main Street, and Seventh Avenue. Ordinance 13-529, approval of chapter 27 revisions with respect to parking, meters, pay stations, permit parking, and leased parking. Ordinance 13-530, authorize property record maintenance fee and to repeal section 2-30D to remove assessment division from Department of Finance, create section 2-35C to reassign the assessor division under community development. Okay, no one came forward to speak to any of those. It takes us to new resolutions. New resolutions, the first one's resolution 13-531, approval of a special event, Christine and Domestic Abuse Services to utilize city streets for their Race for the Light, December 7, 2013. Would I like to speak to that? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to council for a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, I will be excusing myself from this as I am the founder and race director for this event.
Okay. I need a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Oh, did you want to speak to it as a?
No, I'm just removing myself from.
Oh, okay. Mr. Peck has indicated he's involved, sees the conflict, so he won't be voting on it. He'll be voting present. Anybody else want to comment? If not, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on resolution 13-531.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Current six.
Okay, that takes us to resolution 13-532, which is to adopt the 2014 city budget. So I will ask citizens to come forward if they'd like to speak to the budget.
Hello, my name is Gary Gray, age 15, West Winwood, Oshkosh. As the council members know, there's been several workshops in regards to the budget and aspects to the budget. There was even two workshops in regards to hearing the various department heads give their presentations. Some of those presentations are, I'm sorry, some of those presentations were in regards to the various negative impact on proposed changes that city managers made. Some of them were just very free presentations, some were very extensive. However, there was one element, important element that was missing. There was no presentation on the negative impact on increasing property taxes. And that, in the manager's amendments, it was a little over a million dollars. Now it's up to five million and a half dollars, and there was no, as I said, no statement in regards to how increased property taxes would affect individual property owners. The proposed tax rate for 2014, as in the resolution on tonight's agenda, is an increase of 4 percent. 4 percent is two times, at least two times, the cost of living of the last 12 months. A lot of people, civilians, are dependent on the cost of living, and here we are, increasing the tax rate by at least two times the amount. And I realize that property owners and renters do pay taxes, and they should pay taxes, but perhaps this is a little bit bigger increase than it should be. Also, there's been, there's many, many, well, let me say it this way, the proposed budget on the agenda tonight has a lot of consistent inconsistencies to it. Let me give you a couple of examples. There was a survey that was looked at from citizens, and based on that survey, some citizens thought some service was provided adequately, and there was a statement made that since it was done adequately, that there should be increased funding. There was another area of service that people didn't think was done adequately, and there was a comment made that we should increase expenditures because it was not being done correctly. That seems very strange, especially when there were other things that were being done correctly and other things that were not being done correctly. And I'm not asking for an increase, of all, an increase in property tax. Another aspect is that the city manager had had adjustments for protective services that it looks like it's going to be put back in, which is fine. However, the inconsistency is that there is going to be some mid-block riding removed, and isn't that a public safety issue also? What is more important perhaps, and maybe it's not equivalent, is maybe a little damage to a house or something getting messed up in a dark block. And I am not saying that, okay, I'm sorry, let me go on because I want to make a couple of other points. I also would suggest that the council should try to increase the amount of public participation in the budget process and actually in a lot of the policymaking. The seven workshops were observed by public, it could be observed by public, but besides the meeting two weeks ago and tonight's meeting, there was no public input other than telephone calls and emails. Some people don't have emails. Some people don't like to use telephones, and actually, some people don't want, would not like to stand in someone like a witness stand, talking to seven churches. But anyhow, so I think some look at increasing participation of citizens would be beneficial to the budget process. I also want to quickly go to another topic, the 2015 budget. 2015 budget, I realize we're talking about tonight, 2014, but let's take a look at 2015. If we assume a 2 percent pay increase across the board, we're talking about a $9,000 increase in expenses. Where is that money coming from? That's going to come from presumably tax fails, increasing property tax again. That is, that is almost 3 percent increase for 2015, and that does not include some expenses that we know are probably going to increase, like health insurance and just general operating funds.
You're coming to the end of your time limit.
Okay, thank you. And that is also another problem, is that, you know, sometimes people need five, more than five minutes to talk. than five minutes to talk. Anyhow, a couple of statistics, and then I will stop because I think the mayor will grab me. Oscars has a home ownership of forty-three percent. Wisconsin, the state of Wisconsin has ownership of sixty-three percent. Could that be because of the cost of homeownership? The property rate here in Oscars is fourteen percent, which is higher than the state rate. No. Those people have homes or rent from some place and pay property taxes. Also, I think it was a couple, couple weeks ago, the superintendent...
Please wind it up.
Okay. The superintendent of the public schools says forty-one percent of the kids coming to school are hungry, hungry. Now, I would, I would assume that the parents of those kids are not saving the money to use for drinking during the evening or during the weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. I am going to make one correction here, that's also just so the council all knows where we're coming from. The materials that were initially set out assumed some, some amendments were going to be made and included, and that's, that's not the way we said we were going to do it. What we said we're going to do, and the materials that people have now, is the budget is presented by Mr. Roloff. The budget is presented by Mr. Roloff at a property tax increase of about two point eight nine percent, I believe. The levy was up like three point six three or something. Correct me if I'm wrong.
You're right, yeah.
But see, at this point in time, it's two point eight nine percent in terms of the property tax increase. So what the council will be looking at here is, if anybody else wants a comment on that, that, that change has, has been made. So there may be amendments to it that may push the rate up, that may push the rate down, depending on which way it goes. But right now, the budget submitted is two point eight nine percent property tax increase. Anybody else like to speak to the, to the budget here? Okay, I will bring it back to council, and I'll ask for a motion in a second on the city budget as presented by the city manager. If people want to take some time to get out their paperwork, feel free to do so. I need a motion in a second, first of all.
Still moved.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, so it's on the floor. So now it's open to comments, it's open to amendments. At the last budget session, we had, I think we had seven budget sessions, something like that, or maybe it was eight altogether, counting the, counting the meeting last time. There were some amendments that were talked about, possible amendments. Council members have those, and then any other amendments could be made, so.
Mr. Mayor?
If an amendment...
If I could, after you, I'd just like, before the council gets started.
If we do these amendments, each time there's amendment, I will give an opportunity to individuals in the council chamber to come up and, and speak to the amendment. Okay.
I was asked a couple of questions, and I wasn't sure if all council members had the similar question. The worksheet that I gave you, you'll notice that a column has proposals selected by council, and that column is blank. And then next to it, it shows the running total impact on tax rate. The reason they're all the same numbers is because none of those have yet been selected by council. So as council votes on these various amendments, Mr. Noakes is, will give a running total, and we can fill you in on how, how this, how the chart is moving. I can tell you that each time a decision's made, for example, the very first one, the PC hardware tech is the first one. If the council, for example, voted for that one as is proposed, then the, the column that says tax rate impact, the proposal selected by council would put that in there, that zero point zero one three four four, that would get added to the nine point one eight nine, and then we give you a running total. So we can give you a running total as you go along. The original resolution that you received, Mr. Noakes and I were going through an exercise because when you're all done, we need probably a few minutes to make sure that whatever council votes on is compliant with the expenditure restraint law, and we were taking some liberties on the expenditure restraint law, and that's why you got the resolution that you did. We have since given you a new resolution where all the amendments are washed out until such time as council votes on them. So apologize for the misunderstanding, I, I accept responsibility for that. So I think you can work from this worksheet and then vary from it, because certainly what we tried to capture was what you talked about last week, but council is free to make any amendments they choose to and vary any of the amendments that, that are on the sheet. I hope that we captured the discussion that council had last week.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, a question here.
Just, just a quick question. This occurred to me on the drive here to City Hall this evening. Not the last workshop, but the workshop prior, we had discussion about the two hundred lights that were being cut from the budget, and then not one of us brought it up last workshop. So was that something that was added back in from two workshops ago, or was that something we discussed and then it just kind of disappeared from there?
It got discussed and disappeared.
Okay.
So that's still there. That would be transportation, it's on page eleven, streetlights. The fourth one down on page eleven, transportation, streetlights, removal of mid-block, WPS lights, the lights that are, we run from WPS, and that's a thirty-five thousand dollar expenditure. So again, just for the sake of discussion, if you wanted to add that one, we can pretty much copy over, you'll see the formatting's pretty similar. All we would do is move that over onto the worksheet that council was given, and we'll put it in the computer, and we'll, we'll, we'll run a running total. So if you want any more amendments, that's how, that's how you would do it.
Okay.
I just have a follow-up.
We could get out the miscellaneous there, and I just filled mine in, the streetlights, and thirty-five thousand was the dollars, and that was the additional, I'm sorry. Mr. Herman?
I just have a question. You, you talk about WPS streetlights, and Chief Groyle obviously objected to it strongly, and he used the crime prevention to environmental design techniques, which I was certified in, which I'm no longer certified because I'm removed four years from my job. But anyways, do we even know what those lights are or where they are at this point? I mean, it's pretty hard for council to make a decision if we don't even know where those lights are. I mean, if they're way, I mean, I'm not saying that there isn't an important streetlight, but, you know, if they're not, I mean, we just had a rash of burglaries up and down the Frontage Road. I mean, if we're taking streetlights off of the Frontage Road where we've had a rash of crime, that might be a concern. We had one citizen talk about the streetlights in a residential neighborhood. So I guess it'd be kind of helpful if we knew where these lights were that you were proposing to be removed.
Right. We would probably do it the same way that was done a few years back, that we look at revising the standards citywide. So we used to have a standard spacing, let's say, two hundred and fifty feet between lights, and over that time where streetlights were removed a few years ago, that increased to about three hundred and twenty-five to three hundred and fifty feet. Still trying to do the intersections, but the problem is that there's a lot of diversity in how the streets are laid out in the city, and we can't say at the outset, here's what's going to look like. We would probably look at treating streets that serve commercial areas a little bit differently than residential areas, but we would need to look at the maps a lot more closely to be able to analyze that.
That being said, are we using the most efficient streetlights, the ones that give us the most luminums and outcasting that, you know, if we did turn a few off that by replacing current ones with more efficiency? I know we have in here some LED lights and increases there.
Correct. For the public service lights, which comprise the majority of the lights that we paid for, we're doing basically the best we can. Over the last, it wasn't the last couple of years, but previous to that... We...
Do we have the problem solved?
I hope so. You okay, Andy?
Wireless mic.
Oh, the wireless mic. Somebody's doing karaoke in the back. You good, Andy?
I think that should do it.
Thank you.
So a couple of years ago, we wrapped up an effort called de-wadding, that we reduced the wattage that was coming from light spaces, cost-saving measure. That's something that has reduced our electricity bills. So could we be doing more with high-pressure sodium? How we could. We are interested in going to LED. Public Service is still looking into that, but even if they were to switch over immediately, we probably wouldn't see any immediate cost savings with it.
Okay. You kind of mentioned, is there a standard that you use to how many streetlights we should have per, you know, neighborhood block, or for a business district, or any of that type of thing, that is kind of, you know, you should have ten for every, you know, whatever?
It's a ballpark of like three hundred and twenty-five to three hundred and fifty feet, but we look at where trees are, we look at where the existing utility line is, where intersections are, if there are curves in the road, there are a number of factors that come into play. And so even when we had the streetlight removal process about ten years ago, we would get appeals, and some of them we granted because we realized that we didn't, you know, keep some things in mind.
Okay. Well, we don't own these, we still have the authority to tell WPS to remove them?
Correct.
Okay.
I do have one question. What is the cost to do this? See, there, we just don't physically unscrew the light bulb, there's, there's cost in analyzing this whole thing, so what's the cost to implement this change?
I guess we need to see, because we'd be approaching it differently this time than last time. We have obtained from public service their maps, which show where their lights currently are. We would need to get that integrated with our GIS to be able to overlay it against the streets. But from there, it's going to take probably a little, little bit more block-by-block kind of work to look at it. We don't know at the front end how much time it's going to take.
And do we even have an appeal process? Let's say we did take some residential streetlights out, citizens are concerned and upset, would we have an appeal process to put those lights back, or not take them out, or something like that, or what is it?
I can tell you that, I can tell you that when the city last removed streetlights, several years before I got here, I'm still getting people complaining about those lights. It is, it does, I mean, your, your sense is, is very good that this is going to have some impact. What we're going to try to do is minimize what that, that negative impact might be. We will take a look at safety issues that may be out there. So those are all the factors that would come into this. We don't take that lightly. I don't believe we're removing every mid-block, we're just going to be selectively choosing those and factoring all those things in. Chris, I don't know if you answered Mr. Cummings' question, I think he was asking about capital costs associated with that, and I believe because we lease them, we simply say we no longer wish to lease them.
It was capital, it was also labor. I mean, somebody, city staff has to do this analysis, what, what, how many man-hours is this? I mean, it's a kind of a false savings at that time of time.
And, yeah, labor, the labor side of it, I'm not sure exactly how long it would take. It would take some time, though. And then there's the process that if there are appeals and things like that, it could take some additional time as well. The other part of it, though, city manager's right, I didn't answer that portion of it. In terms of the way that we have lights from public service, there is a contract that's involved, and it's typically a ten-to-twenty-year minimum contract. I would suspect that in all these locations, we've already fulfilled a contract, so they can be removed without any cost to us. But there is still the labor costs at the front end that we would need to expend.
Any questions on this? Can move to any amendments, or if people have other items they want to get more information on, call people up, leave it open to the council, or people can go directly to making amendments, and we'll try and keep track of these as, as we go along, because I'm sure there are going to be some, and if along the way people have additional questions, we'll take those. So I'm open.
All right. I would move to amend the budget to add three hundred and seventy thousand dollar expenditure for the reinstatement of heavy rescue unit and offsetting overtime within the fire department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anybody like to speak to that? Hey, if not, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Any discussion?
I just, of the emails I've received, which is probably a dozen or more, and a couple phone calls, citizens want us to retain the positions. I have not heard one negative comment from our citizens, even one citizen said, raise my taxes, I don't care, it's worth the safety. We got an email from another citizen who highly complimented the paramedics and the job that they're doing. And I, I just think that we can't go below that threshold of one oh eight. In fact, we probably are below that, or where we should be for the amount of calls and services we have, but that, that's a different discussion at a different time. So I will support adding those five positions that Mr. Peck brought up in an amendment, and I'll, I'll be supporting that.
I got much of the same sentiment. All of the contact that I've received from citizens, one hundred percent of it has been in support of the fire department positions, so I'm going to be supporting this tonight. But I, you know, I do want the citizens to recognize, and I'm sure they do, this is one of the fastest-growing areas of our budget, and, and at some point, you know, we, we can't continue to support increases, particularly at, you know, the fire department and the police department, are the two areas where we're seeing the fastest increases in expenses, and they're, they're pretty much all due to payroll and employment. And I, I mean, I certainly value the, the safety of, of our community as much as anyone else, and we have exceptional professional staff in those roles, but, but the, the costs can't continue to escalate in the way that they are, or there is going to continue to be taxes to offset those, those expenses. There's, there's just no way around it as we head down this road in the future.
Hey, I'm, I'm going to oppose it, because I've heard both sides, although more, in favor of adding positions back in, obviously, but I think that was pretty well out there, pretty well planned. I'm going to oppose it for, for, for a number of reasons, and I think we have to start thinking about it. It comes off your, your final statement there, you know, we'll do it, but we've got to look to the future. I don't know that we can fully look to the future. So for some financial reasons, and, and I want to deal with, with some of the issues at the same time. We're at a point where we have two big issues, our capital costs are increasing, and our personnel cost as a percentage of our budget is increasing as a result of our personnel cost increasing as a percentage of our budget, it's creating other problems, such as forcing us to maybe turn off the lights. You know, if you have, if your, if your personnel costs go up so much, then it's going to force you to drop the budget somewhere else. So it's a, it's a give-and-take kind of thing. But I do want to deal with some of the issues here. One of the comments that was made during the meetings was, is that if we do this, we're going to save companies insurance money. And I don't think that's true, because it's, it was said that it was based on ISO rates, and if we somehow or another decrease that, our ISO would slip from rating, which is really, they call fire suppression, rating classification, done by a private company called Insurance Services Office. We would drop from a two to a three. So I think there's some things about that rating that probably ought to be out there and would not result in, in saving any, in businesses any money. And I'm sure nobody's gotten any, any comments from businesses that say, please, please make sure you don't do this so that we can have our insurance saved. The ratings go from one to ten. At a rating one, there's only like four point, only four community, point four communities in the United States that are rated at that level, and then we're rated at two, and there's only, I think it's one point four communities throughout the country that are, that are rated either at a one or a two. If we would fall to a three in that rating system, we would be in above the ninety-fourth percentile, and if we did it slightly, we'd probably be in the ninety-six, ninety-seventh percentile, if that even happened. So I think that means a couple of things further on down the road. Also, in the rating system, keep in mind that it's just not the fire departments that are rated, that's only half of the rating system. Ten percent of the rating system is based on communications in, in the community, and forty percent of the rating system is, is based on water supply, water pressure, things like that. Communities that are viewed as being unsafe are those in the eight, nine, and ten category, and more typically, it's because they don't have good water systems, small, small residential areas that don't have, have good support. So in essence, even if we went down a, a point, we would still be in the top probably ninety-six, ninety percent rating system of, of communities for, for fire protection. That's the reality of it. That speaks to a number. Also, is there, are a lot of insurance companies that don't even use that rating. The largest one, State Farm, I did a little checking on this, doesn't even use a system. They use a zip code system by, by law, so it would affect not there. Also, talked to an agent who said that moving from a two to three, even if, even if it happened, probably it's so minuscule because you're still really up there towards the top. I mentioned this for a couple of reasons. One, because it was mentioned by somebody that economic impact, it also would, it would hurt us in terms of companies coming here, because we wouldn't be viewed as being as safe. Well, I think being in the top ninety-five percent, there's not a community that's going to, nobody, and a company's going to look at that and say that we're not a safe community for fire protection. So I don't think it... as being as safe. Well, I think being in the top 95%, there's not a community that's going to, nobody and a company is going to look at that and say that we're not a safe community for fire protection. So I don't think it would have any impact on economic development, won't have any impact on insurance costs. The safety issues obviously are a tougher issue. You know, no matter how much you add, you can add safety. The same thing would be true in police. The police department said if we could add some more people there, we would be better off and we would be safer. We're just heard if we had, put the streetlights back in, we would be safer. So those are other alternatives to doing it. So I think a lot of the issues that have been brought up, the issue boils down to where people think about the safety issue, that. It's also been said that there's some concern about not supporting the fire department. And that's not true at all when I've said this, when I've said this before, supportive disposition before. But we do support the fire department. We do support our protective services. You can just look at the average salary of our protective workers, or 36% above those. The median salary of our protective people, police and fires, like 36% above that of other people out there. That's there for a reason. The retirement system, the pension system is an enhanced system for very good reasons. Over time, we enhanced that in the last contract. When we do equipment, typically for the fire department, we waive bids for a very good reason. We want the best equipment, consistent equipment. Even if we don't add these positions in, our budget for this year will be higher than our budget was last year with the fire department. If we add the positions back in, it'll be above, it'll be nearly four, close to 4% above the budget for last year. It'll be more creepy in that way. Positions represent over time an annuity. For every position, it's going to increase probably somewhere between 2.5% and 5% a year, part of what Mr. Gray was saying before up there. So for those reasons, and it's a question of fairness across the departments and safety across the whole city and a variety of things. My feeling is this is a judgment issue. Our safety level will not go down. It won't be recognized as going down. If we throw that out there, everybody says we're not going to be as safe, only, you know, that gets people excited, and I understand that. I think there are other investments we can make in safety. So I would rather see us only restore a couple of the positions in there. Another issue has had to do with the overtime. We've been concerned about the overtime, and rightly so, and the stress that's involved in that. It's one reason why I think we shouldn't lose all five of those positions. So I'd add two of those back in. The other thing that I hope would be looked at within the fire department would be other ways of putting this together in terms of the heavy rescue. Also, I think when it comes to special events, I think we need to look at the possibility of having special events engage in contract services for ambulance service. I don't know whether that's good, bad, or otherwise, but that's what we do with the police department, and that takes that stress. That can help deal with that particular issue also. So I think the issues that are out there, all of them aren't issues that have been mentioned, number one, and number two, I think there's maybe some other ways to deal with some of the issues. So for that reason, I'll vote no to the five. I would go for adding a couple of more positions, but I think if not, the future's going to be there, as Mr. Fitzgerald said, you know, while we're pushing it down the road to next year, which is what we did last year, because we had the same discussion last year. So that's a reason I'm going to vote no to the five. Other comments? Okay, I'll take the roll call vote on an amendment to reinstate the five positions that were recommended be cut out of the city manager's budget.
Pat?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
No.
Carried 6-1.
Okay, so we now have the motion amended, have the $370,000 back in with the five positions. So we have amendment one. Okay, are there other amendments?
Yes. I'd like to, would like to make an amendment to reinstate the assistant planner at $55,000 for a number of reasons. I'm understanding as much of this compensation is covered by grants, and I think we need that position to, number one, help us get the grants, but we have a lot of momentum going now in neighborhood development, neighborhood stabilization, and I think if we don't have that position onboard, it's going to probably just, we're going to slide backwards after three years of hard work. So that is my reasoning to have that position back in.
Second.
Is there a second? Been moved and seconded. Anybody like to come up, speak to that position? Addie back in, the assistant planner? Reinstate it? Seen no one come up, we'll bring it back here for discussion. Other comments?
I will support this. This is an economic development issue. We've talked about expenses, which are very important. At the same time, we need to look at ways to increase our revenue, and that's through economic development, that is through stabilization of neighborhoods, that is through maintenance of our property tax value, and this particular position is very integral in all of those things. So I'm not someone that likes to spend money just to spend money, but many people have heard me say previously that you need to be frugal, not cheap. And I believe that this is being frugal. This is allowing us to expand the base, so to speak, which will allow us to increase tax revenues in the future, which may help to mitigate some of these increases in expenses that we're looking at. So with that, I will support this.
Comments? Yes, clerk.
We have made neighborhood initiatives and strengthening our neighborhoods one of our priorities through our strategic planning process. I view this position as an investment in that, so I will also support this because I think it's an investment in our future that will help us expand our tax base, which means that some of these things can be absorbed in the future without a rate increase.
Who else? I'll also vote for this one. I don't want to, I didn't want to put too many positions back in, but I think this is absolutely critical, given our concerns with the neighborhoods and because of the payback issue. This one has a payback issue to it, if the other ones don't. I will support this one, for all the reasons mentioned. Others? Seen none, I'll ask clerk to take a roll call vote on reinstating assistant planner. Comes out to be about $55,000.
Pat?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried 7.
Okay, other amendments?
While we're in the adding positions back in, I think with the growth in technology and the expansion of the role of technology in our daily, daily lives, I would propose adding back in the $56,400 for the PC hardware tech for the IT department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Anybody like to comment on that? Come forward. Seen no one come forward, we'll bring it back to the council for further discussion. Allison Osby?
Mr. Clark beat me to the punch. I was going to add that amendment back in. It is, as I had mentioned in the last workshop, it's been, it's clearly obvious, we have to be about the fundamentals, and this particular department obviously supports almost virtually every area of the city. It's already a department that has cut just about every possible thing that there is. And again, going back to it, I was not sure if it was a position that was being eliminated because we no longer needed that position, or if it was just a matter of trying to balance a budget. It's clear that it's just trying to balance the budget, but that there would be immediate negative implications to the various departments virtually immediately. I do support adding that back in.
I just have a question. Just a question, Mr. City Manager. On one sheet, it says it's $46,400, and on another sheet, it's what Mr. Clark proposed. Is it the 56?
There's a $10,000, they were going to contract out the services and they subtracted.
We can reduce that amount, so.
It's going to be a follow-up amendment that I was going to propose.
So we are, so the, so 56,400 is the correct amount?
Is the correct amount for the position, but we, when we had cut that position, we had added $10,000 to the budget. My understanding from Councilor Clark's motion is that he doesn't intend to follow up with another motion to cut $10,000 from the IT budget, assuming that this motion passes.
Correct.
That was how we were going to have. Do you have other comments?
I will make that motion if this passes. I will make a follow-up motion to change the funding in the contractual services portion of the IT budget to account for some of that.
Okay.
Other comments? I'll also support it. This is one reason why, again, the fire, that I couldn't, because when we did fire, we were going to reduce like less than 5% of the personnel here, just a one-person reduction. There's a 14% reduction in the department by itself. 14%, three times what we did, what we were going to do to fire, and I think 14% is too much for the other reasons that were mentioned before. Okay, comments? I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on reinstating the PC hardware tech.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried 7.
Okay, Mr. Clark, you may also make your follow-up.
I will make up the follow-up motion, which is to remove $10,000 from the contractual services portion of the IT department budget to help offset some of the cost increase associated with this position.
Second.
Anybody like to come up and comment on that? Seen none, we'll bring it back to the council for any discussion. I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on removing the $10,000 contract cost that was going to be used to substitute if the person hit light.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried 7.
Okay, we now have the original motion plus four amendments. Any further amendments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Could, I'd like to make an amendment to combine the across-the-board pay raises for city staff along with the pay-for-performance plan budget into one pool.
So is that the $150,000, so basically the one that I talked about last time?
Correct.
The one that you first mentioned?
Correct.
I just want to be clear.
Yes, yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is, in essence, is taking what was going to be a 2.5% increase across the board, and then on top of that, have $150,000 pay for performance and actually put, take that $150,000 pay for performance and put it into 2.5%. So like a little over 1% would be across the board, and then the remainder would be pay for performance, so that the total wage increase for people, for the body of people would be 2.5%. Anybody like to speak to that? Seen none, bring it back to the council for discussion. Can I get a second on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
I need help. Yep.
Mr. Wolf, do we, do we know yet what the, I mean, with what the pay for performance is going to amount to? Do we have any hard numbers at this point as far as evaluations that were performed and what each department's going to be awarding?
We projected the $150,000 based on statistically what we thought it would be, and it's within a few thousand dollars.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, it's, that's what we thought.
And is that, is that, I mean, a relatively final, it's final at this point to me, most?
I'm still approving a lot of them, so they have to go through the final approval process, and I've been a little occupied with budgets, so I haven't finished all of them. But yeah, it appears to be in that direction that we're, we're in the $150,000 range, which was, we did some statistical analysis of that.
Okay. And I asked that question. I mean, the reason for this, this being brought up initially was that, you know, there was a, we have three different methods of employees receiving pay increases in the city, and two of those are based not on any merit, but just based on being here and maintaining the position. The pay for performance, which was introduced this past year and is a new entity that's going to be paid out in 2014, is a merit-based pay raise. And I, you know, I think, I think the, at least, at least initially, I think there was a belief that this was going to ultimately replace some of those other, those pay raises for city staff. I know city staff has been working hard over the last few years of the recession, particularly since Act 10, hasn't been able to, to get, the non-representative staff hasn't been able to get some of the pay increases that representative staff had. We did move this past year to give a 1% pay increase during the middle of the year, whereas there hadn't been a pay increase prior to that. I did want to attempt to give a 2% pay increase this year, coupled with the pay performance. I guess I'm happy to hear that that $150,000 amount was reached, but, you know, in that regard, I think we still need to be able to keep a cap on non-merit-based pay raises, and that's why I'm supporting this measure.
Other comments? Hey, seen none, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on the amendment, which is essentially to put together the across-the-board and the pay for performance into one total amount.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried 7.
In essence, what it does is it reduces the proposed budget by $150,000 and reduces personnel costs by $150,000. Any other amendments?
Mayor, I would like to add back into the budget the 200 streetlights, $35,000.
Second.
Anybody like to comment on that? Feel free to come forward. Okay, bring it back to council for discussion.
I will also support this because I just have a feeling that the labor involved to change out the lights or whatever the correct process is will probably be as much as $35,000. So I think it's a wash. And I think we need to keep the streetlights on. There's very dark streets in the city, and it's all part of the quality of life, the work we're doing in the neighborhoods, and we just can't start turning off the lights.
Okay, others?
I concur, Councilor Cummings. And in regards to what Councilor Peck said, you know, this is not something where you just want to spend money to spend money. However, this is a basic fundamental need, and the feedback that I certainly received, gas station, grocery stores, emails that I received, nobody wants to be on the block or the street that has the street light out. So again, it goes back to core, core fundamental things that are, we need to provide to our citizens. Certainly with the different initiatives we have through our police department, through our neighborhoods, it's certainly an essential part of the city of Oshkosh. So I would appreciate support in that.
One other, one other comment, if I may, which kind of affects all the things we're putting back in the budget is, well, as the 2014 budget, a lot of these decisions have a long-range impact on the future of the city. So I think we, the citizens, have to look at them as we're investing in the future of this community. So that's why I'm supporting this, too.
Other comments?
And likewise, I, I'm still looking for other things to cut, and I have a hard time putting other things back into the budget, but I just want citizens to know this, this is a matter, this is a penny to the tax levy approximately. So on a $100,000 home, it's going to be $1 more in taxes you'll pay next year to keep these 200 lights on. I hope most people can agree that that $1 is going to be worth it for 200 lights in the city.
I'll also vote for it, as was put out by Mr. Cummings in his discussion, this actually will have its own payback. If we did it, there would be some added expenditure, which would be of some degree. Plus, in terms of adding safety back into the budget, we'll get a lot more smack out of, out of this in terms of adding safety back in per dollar. I'll support it. Okay, take a roll call vote on the streetlights.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried 7.
Okay, any additional ones?
I would like to make an amendment to increase revenues by $39,900 in the community development and inspections budget for additional fees, i.e. late permit penalty fees. This was discussed last week and explained by Mr. Davis.
Second.
If I'd like to comment on that, please feel free to come, microphone, seeing nobody come forward, bring it back here for discussion. Further discussion?
I, you know, I'm just, I guess I'm confused, and maybe if you can clarify, I, I was under the impression, the, the version of Mr. Roloff's budget did have this in there, or, this, weren't in this list of, this menu of options that we're looking at, was in this, I was under the impression this meant to, to take this out? Or am I mistaken?
This was one of the secondary options that wasn't included in the main budget, correct?
Correct. Yeah, this was one of the secondary options.
Okay, okay.
When we were talking last week, I brought up the fact that this was a possible funding source to restore the assistant planner position.
Right, okay, thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk take the roll call vote on the additional fees, including late permit penalty fees on inspections.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Carrier 7.
Any further amendments?
Can we get a running total at this time? After the first inning? First period, first half, whatever.
Little over 928.
928, 071.
76, but you're close.
And that percentage is?
That's any levy, or is that in the tax rate?
That's the tax rate. 4.157%.
4.517, so 4.5%?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I think it's 4.157.
Oh, 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 4.4.157, okay. So a little over 4%.
4.157%.
Basically about 4.2% of, rounding off. Okay, any other additional amendments?
I'll make amendment, also, this is on the revenue proposal side, to increase the yard waste permit fee from $20 to $25.
Second.
Second.
Again, I think this is another area, it's a user fee thing, with our new central garage and everything being set up, I think it'll be much more efficient for our citizens and encourage them to, you know, bring their yard waste over there, so I think it's a, $5 increase is not asking too much of our citizens that use that facility.
If I wanna come forward and speak to that? Seeing no one come forward, bring it back for discussion, other comments?
Just one comment or question for clarification, the, this is the fee we charge citizens of Oshkosh, correct?
That's the way it's demonstrated, but I think it's important to point out that we were looking at with this proposal, an increase also for non-residents. Mr. Potek, what was the?
We currently have 100, we go to 125.
We go from 100 to 125 for non-residents.
So in essence, the proposal is to increase the fees by 25%.
For both, resident and non-resident.
Right.
And we would come back with, this is a budget, we need to come back with a resolution at a later meeting, based on everything you do tonight, then we'll come back with a fee resolution at the next meeting, and you would see that detail, so you're not legislating approving it, you're just doing the budget part of it right now, so thanks for the question, and we won't forget that next, next time around.
That was gonna be my next question, but he answered that.
Is there a substantial number of non-Oshkosh residents that use?
Forty.
Forty total?
Yes.
Any other comments? I'm gonna oppose this one primarily because later on, we're gonna have a, this is really a, a form of recycling, and we're gonna increase the recycle, we're gonna talk about increasing recycling by $20 down below, so I view this in a pot, and I think we have a number of fees we're looking at increasing, and I don't think we need to, to increase this one, and this is what a lot of people wanna, wanna do, also, the higher the fee goes, the less stuff that people are gonna recycle to the waste thing, so I'll vote no on this one. Okay, anybody else? Ask Clerk take the roll call vote on increasing yard waste permit fee from $20 to $25.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
No.
Cummings.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Tower.
No.
Carrier 52.
Okay, we now have the original motion with eight amendments, so any other amendments?
I just had a question for Mr. Potek before we move forward. In the second, and maybe Mr. Roloff can answer this, too, in the secondary options you had brought to our attention, a decrease in repairs and maintenance at the central garage for a total of $17,000, do we know what that would account for? Is this structural maintenance to the existing building?
No.
Or is this, or is this for vehicle maintenance and such?
That's vehicle maintenance.
Okay.
I guess I have one other question, too, Mr. Roloff, you can answer. On the sheet that we got in our council packet under revenue proposals, you get all departments' special event processing fee, but there's nothing in there, what, are you looking for direction? I mean, we have a workshop coming up on special events, so.
I, I put it in there, because that was a point that was raised during the work session, so I put it in there as, something in there, there was no specific amount attached to it, it wasn't a proposal from staff. I agree that, I think we need to take a look at the totality of our special event ordinance before we get into that area, because there's legitimate pros and cons to it, I wouldn't want to rely on that from a budget standpoint, and then after the work session, council looks at it and says, no, that wasn't exactly what we were hoping for. I fear that you might have second thoughts after you start thinking through all of the issues. We've had some preliminary meetings, getting our agenda together for the work session, and that's not necessarily the problem we need to fix, so I'm not sure if you wanna make it a budget issue at this time.
Same thing for the park, on the park usage thing?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other amendments? Any other amendments? Okay, what we now have are eight amendments, reinstate the heavy rescue, and reinstate the assistant planner, reinstate the PC hardware tech, decrease the budget by 10,000 of the contract cost, put the streetlights back in, combine the across-the-board and pay-for-performance, increase the yard waste permit from $20 to $25, and then increase some fees in the inspections department. So those are the eight amendments, so we now have a motion amended by eight amendments. Any other amendments, or any other comments? Discussion regarding the budget.
I just, one comment I just wanna make, and it kinda goes with Mr. Gray, I think, left, no, but, you know, he was talking about citizen involvement, I, you know, we did hear quite a few citizens, granted, we don't have like, I mean, there is a public input portion of this, it's one council meeting, but we heard from quite a few citizens, or I did, by phone and, and through email, so I do think quite a few citizens did have some input to council on how the budget should look, what should be added, what, you know, might be taken out, but the bottom line is, I think we gotta tell our story better, of what the citizens are getting out of the city budget, what is happening in the city. Mr. Cummings brought up, you know, about, you know, our, our helping neighborhoods initiatives, and some of those things, and, you know, the streetlights, the importance of those, so I do think that it, it's important that citizens realize what they're all getting out of the budget, and how it benefits their quality of life here in the city of Oshkosh, the services that are provided by our, our employees, and in some cases, they get very few services from the city, but in other cases, they may get quite a, quite a bit. So I do think that it's important that we continue to tell our story, and, and not just through, you know, electronically, because a lot of people, and Mr. Gray brought that up, too, that don't have email, don't have cable, don't have those types of things, so when there are opportunities to tell our story, like the State of City address, other opportunities that, we need to let citizens know that this is what their budget's going for, this is what their taxes are going for, and that it, it, it's a tough process, and it's not easy, but all seven of us pay the same increases that, you know, are the, the other citizens that we represent, so it's not like we're immune from any of these changes either, so, just wanna make that comment.
Comments?
Just one last question, I believe we should be at about 9.27396 for the rate, and which is a 3.77% increase.
I believe we're at 9.281, and that's a 2.849% increase.
You're probably finding a slight discrepancy, because the, we've got a more refined number on our assessed value, and that's probably why you're just, just a hair off.
I was starting from the base.
You're using the old number, and we gotta, we gotta revise number from the state. So we're at 384, and I believe that there was something floated last week of a 3.5% cap on the increase. Now, I am comfortable with, with where this is at, but I'm wondering if anyone is going to bring anything forward to address that 3.5% cap that was thrown out on the table before we move forward.
I was the one that threw it out on the table, and I didn't really throw it out just as a cap, I said, that's something I'd feel comfortable with, I brought it up in the context, if we could get down, be below the 3.5, I'd wanna put some money in, I was willing to take 3.5 and put some money in to pay down some capital expenditures, because we have, to me, we have two great issues in this budget, one is our capital budget, and the other is our escalating personnel cost, so I, we're over that, so I won't bring that particular thing up. Have obviously been voted down, that was why I had those concerns. I am concerned with the increase, at the rate we're doing it at, because we've also increased it structurally, because of the, when you put in all the positions that we've put back in, in essence, you, you've changed the budget structurally, with a probably an annuity rate on those positions we put back in of better than 2.5% per year, so next year when we come, it's gonna be even tougher to make some of this balancing, because we, we structurally have, have raised the budget, and it will be, as I say, an annuity rate of better than 2.5% attached to that, those positions going in, so I'm concerned, but it's, it's been the will of the council, the, the members, I'm not gonna vote no, because I think we need to have a budget, the council as a whole has voted on these things, I'll vote for the budget, but I'm, I'm not happy with, with where we are, I will say that, particularly since we're talking about fees, and we just added another fee tonight. We're gonna hear back on these fees in a pretty significant fashion, as the people begin looking at their water bill, their utility bill, the binder permit, getting their recyclable bill, we're higher than, I'd like to be, because there are, there are some issues out there. With those concerns, I, I will, I will support the budget, because the majority of folks have, have gone along with that, and we need to have a budget in which we, we reach a consensus, so I will go along, but I'm not happy.
One, one last comment, we've only been discussing this, this budget this evening maybe an hour, and this is not the amount of time that we have spent on this budget. As was noted, we've had many, many workshops, as well as the homework that all of us have put into this, so this is not something that this council takes lightly, we understand this. As Mr. Herman said earlier, he actually stole something I said last week, all of us sitting up here receive the same tax bill that everyone else does, we pay the same rate, we don't get a pass, we understand what the issues are, and so, you know, with this, I believe this is a good budget, I believe all of our employees are valuable to this community, I don't subscribe to the stereotype that's out there of the overpaid, underworked government employee. I think if people would take the time to come down to the city hall, or to the Public Works Garage, or to the Parks Department, or whatever, and spend a day with these people, they would find that these people are delivering a valuable service to this community, that the citizens of this community want, and, you know, the, the comment earlier tonight by Mr. Gray about getting more involved in your community, it's very easy to sit back and complain, or to say the council doesn't know what they're doing, or something like that, but step forward, take the time, rather than looking at the generalization, take the time to come down and visit the departments, visit these people, see what they do and the service they provide to you, the citizens of Oshkosh.
Okay, other comments? Yeah.
Just quickly, I'm, I'm comfortable with this budget as well, I was prepared to even go just a, a little bit higher in regard to funding, the firefighter positions that were being discussed are possibly replaced, just because I heard taxpayers say they wanted to pay for that. I did wanna address a comment that Mr. Gray made earlier in the evening, no one, it's, it's, how is, how is this gonna impact the 2015 budget, how is this gonna impact future budgets, and he asked the question, how do we, how do we grow our way out of this, I don't know if he said grow our way out of this, but in essence, that's, that's how we'll do this, is, is, you know, increase tax base, and we've got, you know, the hotel coming online, in, in property valuation, some other developments, retail, commercial, institutional around the, the community, that are gonna add to the tax base, and, and that's, that's ultimately over time how we lower the tax rate in, in light of increasing costs, of course, if, if costs continue to escalate, you know, faster than that, that tax base, or if the tax base isn't growing, that's, that's where we run into some significant problems with the budget, but I'm comfortable with this budget as proposed.
Other comments? Ms. Allison Osby?
Thank you. To piggyback off of what my other council members have mentioned, we have been working on this budget since July, we've had seven workshops since July, I believe, you know, we have been incredibly transparent from the very beginning in talking about the challenges that we've had. Mr. Bowler from the Northwestern, I think, has been just about at every one, so, and transparency is a key, I, I don't think we ever glossed over the fact that there may not be increases, nobody likes taxing increases, I certainly don't, however, we don't live in a perfect community, we live in a great community, but it's not a perfect community, we do have some challenges, and along with blessings, there comes challenges, such as special events, our population growth, depending on, you know, how you look at it, there's certain socioeconomic situations that we have that continue to impact our community, sometimes not always favorably, and unfortunately, we have to address those issues in the best possible way that we can. You know, we may need to look at some strategic planning, and how we're gonna address these types of things that impact our community, you know, I think the challenge is, we've had a, a decrease in funding every year that I've been on council from either the federal or the state, that certainly impacts us, that's due to no fault of staff, or the council, or the tax-paying citizen of Oshkosh. It's just a part of life, and we're gonna have to deal with it as best as we can, you know, I think we'll have to look carefully internally to see if there are lean measures, as Mr. Cummings is always talking about, you know, I think there may be some things that we can do differently internally, maybe perhaps improve in order to make sure that we don't lose or miss opportunities, you know, hopefully with one of the positions we added back in, you know, we can take advantage of more grant opportunities, which we know are out there, and we do have some staff people that are particularly phenomenal at that portion of it, so to, to, you know, the mayor's point, I, I certainly understand where he's coming from, and in regards to fire, again, it goes back to say, you know, it's been since July, you know, we've had many, many months, and I think all of us have been approached in one, one way or the other, I know I've been in grocery stores, gas stations, restaurants, phone, email, you name it, I've been approached, and again, if we lived in a perfect world, could we maybe live without two, three, five positions? I don't know, maybe, but with the way that the community is developing and growing, I personally don't think that we can, so, you know, hopefully the citizens will understand, as always, if there's any questions, they can certainly contact us.
Other comments? Yeah, Mr. Clark?
While echoing all the sentiments that have been said already, I just wanna say two things. First, to my fellow council members, since this is my first budget process, I thank you for all of the information you provided to me along the way, making this as smooth as possible to help us make some difficult decisions as a team, and secondly, to the citizens who have taken the time out of their day to call, email, stop and talk to me at the grocery store, wherever they ran into me, thank you for voicing your opinions, because it is through your feedback that we, as a council, can make the best decisions, so thank you for your time and effort, and I encourage you to continue to be involved in your own city.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, if not, we'll take a vote on, on the budget.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Carrier 7.
Okay, now I'm gonna ask Mr. Roloff, what kind of a break do you need?
About a 10-minute break, if we could, then we'll be able to.
Let's take 15, we'll make a quarter break, make it even number up there, so we're set to go, so we'll get started, they'll get their numbers, and when we come back, then we'll, they'll put the numbers together that we need for the next set of decisions that we have to make. So we are in recess for 15 minutes.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area. Simulcast on 101.9 FM WOCT and streamed on the world wide web at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area. Simulcast on 101.9 FM W O C T and streamed on the world wide web at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org.
We're coming back in session. At this point, we have adopted a 2014 city budget. The next thing that we will be looking at is Resolution 15-533, approve 2013 tax levy. So I'm going to ask if we get an explanation with the work we've done tonight, what is it we'll be asked to approve? So the people know before we get into it.
The first page I had up was the budget changes. This one is the new numbers on the tax levy. So the City of Oshkosh levy changed from $32,092,000 to $32,031,000. And the operations number changed. Debt service stayed the same, so operations was the only place where it changed. You'll see it changed from $14,387,700 to $14,326,700.
Let's run through that again. What's the figure we'll be asked to approve?
The total figure will be $32,031,000. That'll be our levy. So this is Resolution 534 that you're looking at?
Wait, we need to deal with 533.
Excuse me.
We need to deal with 533, so.
So the numbers I showed you on the front page carry through on the next page also, with just the City of Oshkosh numbers changing. We have these three times because we have levies for the El Coma Senate District and also for the Winnie County School District.
Okay, so there's a $32,031?
$32,031,000.
$32,031,000?
Correct.
It follows through in all three sections.
Okay. How does that compare to the last year's? Just so people know.
Last year's levy was, if you'd just give me a moment.
I think it's like $30,604.
I want people to know what the figures are.
Correct.
What I'm really interested in is the percentage increase over last year.
Correct.
Over last year's levy?
Over last year's levy. How much are we increasing the tax levy?
Yeah, I don't have that number calculated unless Mark does.
I'll have to, just give me a moment. Last year's levy was $30,604,908. So are you asking for the levy or the tax rate itself?
I'm looking at the levy right now. We'll do the tax rate next when we get to that.
Very good.
Just so people understand, there's a difference between the tax levy and the tax rate, the difference being the change in assessment.
Okay. The increase in the levy is 4.66%.
All right then, I'm going to read the resolution here. Resolution 15-533, approve 2013 tax levy. This tax levy is a tax levy over last year, for people's information. This year, the levy we're looking at is $32,031,000. That's a 4.66% increase over last year. Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? See, no one come forward to speak to it. I'll bring it back to the council. I'll ask for a motion in a second on the levy of $32,031,000.
So moved. Second.
Moved to second. Discussion. As I said, we deal with a couple of concepts here. One is the tax levy. That's the total dollar value of the tax levy. The other is the tax rate. The reason the percentage increases will be different because there's been an increase in assessed value. Any other questions on that? I'll ask clerk take the roll call vote on the proposed tax levy. That's resolution as revised with the numbers that we changed in the budget. It's Resolution 13-533.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Curried 7.
Okay, that takes us to Resolution 13-534 is to approve the 2013 tax rates. Again, want to discuss that so we know what figures we're talking about here.
City of Oshkosh numbers again changed just like they did on the previous resolution. So you see for the City of Oshkosh taxpayers, the entire levy of $90,287,704. And below that, we see the rates calculated.
And the tax rate itself is how much per thousand now? I'm just trying to find the nine point.
9.281.
9.281 is the tax rate?
Yes.
So we're in essence approving all of these on this sheet though? For the others?
Yes.
Okay. But the key thing is, is that the tax rate is 9.281 and the percentage increase over last year is?
It's on the computer spreadsheet.
It's 3.849% increase in the rate.
3, 4, 8, 9, so it's not over 4%?
3.849, excuse me.
I thought the figure we asked before was over 4%.
Yes, how much the levy went up before?
Levy went up four points.
Levy went up four, but the rate only went up three point.
Okay, I just want to ask because I'd asked what the percentage tax rate was before. I thought.
I think at one point we said a little over 4%, but I think that was before one last change had been done.
Okay, so the actual tax rate will increase 3.849%. And that figure is 9.281,000.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay. I'll ask then Resolution 13-534, change in the rates. I'll ask anybody come forward who wants to speak to that? See no one come forward. Questions by, well, I'll ask for a motion in a second by the council.
So moved. Second.
So moved to second. Questions by the council. Okay, so as far as citizens are concerned, what they'll be looking at is a 3.849 increase in their tax rate, but will be less than 4%. Does that include the state adjustment?
Well, the state adjustment works into the entire tax bill. So we can give you, tell you what the rate's going to be for, the one I'm looking at, Ed, is that just Oshkosh area schools? Because the state tax credit went up slightly, the overall tax bill is going to be $24, 24.868. So it's a 1, it's a 2.8% increase.
Okay, that's the total tax bill, but the, in essence, the rate for the city.
I'm sorry, it's a 1% increase, 1.028% increase, excuse me.
So there will be some adjustment, a little bit down on the 3.849?
Correct, because when you take a look at all the governmental entities that are, all the taxing entities, the overall increase, including state tax credit, is 1.028%.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, ask the clerk take the roll call vote on Resolution 13-534, 2013 tax rates.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Curried 7.
Okay, that takes us to Resolution 535, approve 2014 capital improvement plan, CIP. Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? If not, we will bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Open it up for discussion.
I, just a clarification question, Mr. Roloff. It was brought up again at the workshop last week about the mobile command post with the police department. What are we showing now in our budget for that under major equipment? That'd be page 34. You had mentioned that it showed $250,000 in the budget, and you pointed out that under other, that $144,000 was like a grant or?
Well, what we're doing is.
Kind of re-explain all that so that everybody knows what.
What we've done is we've anticipated that, and the whole purchase will be predicated on us acquiring outside funding of $144,000. We're having discussions with various groups in the community about what we can do to do a fundraising effort for that because of the community outreach elements of that command post vehicle. It won't simply be a unit just for hardcore law enforcement, but really more of a community outreach vehicle that would be used primarily by police, but also by, potentially by other city departments as well. So we believe we can get some community support for this, similar to the Universal Playground, which has been in the budget for a couple of years and has always been predicated on matching funds, and we haven't gotten the matching funds, so we haven't done anything with that project either.
Okay, so then as we approve the capital improvement budget, we're basically approving $106,000?
The net cost is $106,000, yes.
Okay. And then that money will show up in our budget books as like earmarked dollars for the mobile command post, and it'll just carry on until such time as partners and funding sources come together?
Correct.
Okay with that? Other questions on capital improvement program?
What is our, with everything now, Mr. Roloff, what is our total capital improvement budget? Because that reflected, they had $250,000, I believe. So it's over, it's under $44 million now, correct?
It's still $44 million because we put the gross costs in for that. So the overall CIP is $44,462,700. The $250,000 was included in that amount. It's still in there, but it's, but it has offsetting revenues as well.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Comments? Ask clerk take the roll call vote on Resolution 13-535, the capital improvement program.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Curried 7.
Okay, we've completed the budget-related issues. Thanks everyone for their patience and for their help and for their input, including citizens and council members. All right, takes us to Resolution 13-536, authorize John a mayor utility rate consultant to complete and file a water rate increase application with Public Service Commission of Wisconsin. Anybody like to speak to that? Bring it back to council for a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Okay, Mr. Roloff, you want to go through the, just explain what that is and what the timeframe will be on that?
I think what I'd like to do is introduce Mr. Meyer. He's here in the audience and he can just give you a brief overview of what the process will be. Does that seem appropriate? John, if you could come on up?
And what the timelines will be.
You came all this way, John, you may as well talk.
Thank you. Okay, the timeline on this is when we file an application with the Public Service Commission, we're basically sending in a request for an increase in rates. They go through a review process, both as to the adequacy of what we're asking for and the level of the rates. Once that comes back, they'll generally make some changes. We may have to explain some things or whatever. It'll then go to the rate staff. They determine the exact rates that will be set, and then there's a telephonic hearing. The entire process, they say on their website, is 120 to 150 days, so you're looking at probably four to five months. Perhaps it may go through quicker. I've had a couple that have been quicker lately, but that's about the timeline.
Now what's the rate request?
The rate request is we're asking for an increase of about 18.3%. It's a dollar amount of $2,185,000.
Council member have other question?
When you put those rates together, what are your comparables? I mean, do you look at other communities? Do you look at our water utilities? What do you look at to come up with that? Because that's a significant increase, obviously.
Yes, it is. No, I do not look at other communities. But it is, it's based strictly on your financials. I look primarily at historical, what has happened. I do projections as to expenses. I do projections through what the Public Service Commission requires called a test year. That means everything is going to be constructed and in service by the end of 2014. So we look at all the various things, but you know, what, how are you going to finance this addition to the plant, whatever? And as you just passed, we're going to borrow for these capital improvements for water. So we look at expenses. We have to generate enough money to pay all your expenses, all of your debt service. And what we want is we want to generate some cash for capital projects here. When I looked at this and stood before you guys seven years ago, we had rates that we're going to generate, pay all the bills, pay all debt service, and generate about $2.1 million for capital. That's been eroded over time. Next year, actually, unless we have a rate increase, you won't have enough to pay off the debt service. So we want to generate about $1.6 million for capital projects. You have a lot of debt in the water utility and wastewater utility. You've been borrowing for it, you know, we need to have an equity position here. We have to fund some of this with cash. It'd be nice if we could fund what I always call ordinary and normal capital with cash on hand. That's not going to happen, but we have to keep debt and just try and limit it a little bit. So that's what we're looking at here. We're governed by a maximum in terms of the Public Service Commission has a rate of return, which is a, they permit you to earn a return on your investment in utility plant. It's a little bit like principal and interest, but it's a way of, they have certain limits. So we can only raise, we probably could raise maybe another $200,000 a year, but that would be if under their term rules.
Okay, thank you.
When was the last time the rate increased?
Your last water rate increase took effect, I believe, May of 2011.
That's supposed to be two years, two and a half years.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if the rules governing water utilities are different than other utilities, but it seems to me this current Public Service Commission with some of the heat and electrical rate requests has recently been not only denying the rate requests, but actually lowering rates for customers. Can they do that in an instance with, like this with water? I mean, could they?
Well, they could, but the fact of the matter is they really won't. I mean, this is, they have to give you enough money to pay your bills.
Yeah, okay.
You know, there's no, we're not paying dividends to stockholders here.
Right, okay.
This is strictly, rates are really kind of reactionary. You know, we're looking at the expenses that you have, what we're going to build, how we're going to pay for it. Rates, I'm just batting cleanup. This is how you're going to pay for it.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Just one question I have is to the point of building up equity so that we're able to pay cash. As we do that, is there something that's set up or regulated or something internal to make sure that we, or future councils or staff, don't take money from that for other areas of the city?
You can't, you cannot use water utility money for any other purpose other than water.
I don't think so.
So the real issue would be, are we disciplined enough to make sure that we do as Mr. Meyer is suggesting and then put a little more cash into our, into our, as he calls, ordinary and normal capital expenses? And that's really the discipline that we need to enact for ourselves.
Okay.
Is that a, that's a protection through the council, right? I mean, we already have those in place, right? I mean, you, so that we can't spend it in other?
We can't spend it in other, it's correct, yeah.
Okay, so that protection there. But even putting it, because I know we, in our street projects, the utility pays for some of those projects, so if we cut back on the projects, we actually can put some money aside, correct? And not overspend, kind of like, or?
To the degree we aren't doing the street projects, we're not doing the underlying water with that. So cutting back on that is good. The issue is when we go into the treatment plant, we're spending it entirely on water, for example. So that's something even, Mr. Meyer is suggesting that even in those cases, if it's some equipment related to the plant, maybe we should look at that as an ordinary capital item rather than a capital item that you would borrow for. And that's what he's brought to our attention with his analysis.
Would this be a policy, that direction from the council that you would need or want so that we use that and don't overspend it, I guess, or make sure we put some money aside for future? That the direction you think you may need from us?
Is that the direction you think you may need from us?
Perhaps later on, and once we get a permanent finance director, maybe we can forward that to the long-range finance committee for discussion. It's worthy of discussion, given, you know, our increased investment in capital projects. We've got to put a little cash. I call it a down payment. You've got to put some down payment on our capital projects, just like you put a down payment on a car at home. We really have to discipline ourselves to do the same thing. And perhaps it's something the long-range finance committee can take up and discuss.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, just one more question here that I have. In essence, you'll go through this process, and then it would come back to us to actually approve the water rate that goes through. Is that correct? Or by authorizing you to do this, or are we authorizing whatever comes out of that discussion?
Well, unfortunately, when we authorize to file, the Public Service Commission has the authority to set water rates. So, when they come through with their official rate order, that's really the law of the land.
Okay. I just want, it would come in the form of a memo to us, not in the form of a resolution to us.
Right. You can implement, usually they say you should put these into effect within 90 days, but, you know, that's really it. You can't, you can't say, "Oh gee, I don't like them, I'd like something different." No, when it comes back in the process of submission, it's, that's what you got.
Okay, okay. Wait on that, wait on that. Okay, so what we're approving is authorizing, it's Meyer to file our request. We're looking at...
Public Service Commission, are they citizens? Are they specialists in the field? Who is, who are they? Are they appointed by the governor, or just...
Yes, they're appointed by, the three commissioners are appointed, they're political appointees.
Okay.
Okay? All of the staff members are hired government workers.
Okay, thank you.
Rather controversial right now, as a matter of fact. Okay, any more questions? Appears not. Thank you very much for your help, and thanks for doing it. Well, I'll ask for the clerk to take the roll call vote on resolution thirteen dash five thirty-six.
Pat?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carrier seven.
Takes us to resolution thirteen dash five thirty-seven, approval of fee schedule for sewer use charges. When we were first getting, we were given the new ones, not the old ones. As I asked the questions, it's a rate increase of about 10.8 percent. That schedule is about 10.8 percent. Is that pretty much throughout the schedule, Mr. Roloff?
Yes. I believe it's pretty consistent through the schedule. There might be some nuances here and there that might vary from that 10.8, but it's effectively 10.8.
Okay, anybody like to come forward to discuss that? This is the sewer use charges going up about 10.8 percent for everybody. Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to council and ask for a motion and a second on resolution thirteen dash five thirty-seven.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Knowles was pointing out the report to me, and maybe you can give a little more detail. The revenue we're seeking is 10.8 percent increase. The rates itself can vary depending on the user's size and type.
The executive summary that you got?
Yeah, so, what in essence, what's the most general statement we can make to those who are going to getting, be getting bills, is what I'm asking.
It looks, it looks like from this comparison that your average residential will be in the 12 and a half, 12.7 percent range.
So, greater than the 10 points.
This is sewer.
Okay, so we're talking about a rate increase here of a little over 12 percent for most people, what we're talking. Comments? Yeah, this is tough stuff to take, because we're increasing a number of things here, and we're going for more next. Okay, see no comments. Other than that, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on thirteen dash five thirty-seven.
Pat?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carrier seven.
Yeah, it takes us to resolution thirteen dash five thirty-eight, establish fee for collection and recyclables, and it's proposed here that the fee go up by 20 dollars. It'll be a 20 dollar fee. Right, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, anybody like to speak to that? Please come up to the microphone. See no one coming forward. I'll bring it back to council for a motion and a second on resolution thirteen dash five thirty-eight.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I guess, just a question so that, again, we can put it out there for our citizens. Mr. Roloff, I want to explain why you proposed in this year's budget a 20 dollar fee.
Thank you. Our revenue from the state has been getting reduced over the last few years pretty significantly, and the recyclable revenue that we get from the commodity price for recyclables has gone down. The county sends money back to all the agencies, all the governmental entities that send materials to the landfill, but it hasn't been enough in recent years, and we've essentially gone from what was virtually a self-funding program to one that is getting subsidized significantly by the general fund because of that. So, as a result, I recommended that we have a fee that will make that fund whole.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I have one question. Is there a plan to review this annually?
I think we'll have to review it on annual basis, because otherwise, this fund would end up getting subsidized by the general fund. I think the other fee that the council adopted earlier in the meeting, the yard waste fee, that will also help offset that. To the degree we get more residential units, that'll, that'll help fund the program. To the degree we can use alternative fuels in some of our vehicles, that'll help us as well. So, all those types of things will go up, but of course, as the mayor points out, personnel is a huge component of that. If our personnel costs exceed our revenues, then we could have issues down the road. But it's a lot more automated than it used to be, and I think that's a big advantage that, over what we used to have. We've made our recycling operation much more efficient than it's ever been.
Again, the two things are both the decline in what we used to get from the state for that, and our creeping employment costs are creating issues in other areas, because we don't have money to pay for other areas. Okay, any other comments, questions? All right, I'll have clerk to take the roll call vote on resolution thirteen dash five thirty-eight.
Aye.
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 Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carrier seven.
Okay, it takes us finally to an increase in a rate or fee. Resolution thirteen dash five thirty-nine, resolution adding a special revenue fund for Gatsby, statement number 54, reporting. Mr. Roloff, you want to explain that before I?
Sure. As I mentioned in my memo, when I, my memo to council last week, when I gave the options to choose from, I mentioned that the expenditure restraint program was something that we had to keep an eye on, primarily because of the changes the state itself made, essentially saying that we couldn't really increase our fire protection fee in the water rates. We had to leave it in the general fund or result in reducing our general fund levy, as well as the increased costs for police and fire that were not built into the 2013 budget originally. Those costs, along with just other general increases, took us over the expenditure restraint limit that is put in by state law. In order for us to work around that, we've moved the garbage collection program into a separate fund. It's still supported by general fund tax levy, but we moved it out of there in order to get around any problems that we might have complying with the expenditure restraint law. That's essentially what we're recommending. This is effectively authorizes that, because in accordance with Governmental Accounting Standards Board, statement number 54, anytime we set up a new fund, we have to identify that fund and describe exactly what type of fund it'll be. In this case, it'll be a special revenue fund committed. So, we're moving that program out of the general fund into its own fund, and we have to designate that the funds that are there are committed to this program and this program only.
Essentially, there's no cost involved here. It's just an accounting entry to protect us under the expenditure restraint.
That is correct.
Anybody like to come forward? Bring it back to council for a motion and a second on resolution thirteen dash five thirty-nine.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on resolution thirteen dash five thirty-nine.
Pat?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carrier seven.
Okay, that takes us to council discussion, direction of city manager and future agenda items. The first one on here is a joint workshop with the common council, planning commission, landmarks commission, architectural design standards draft code for December three. And I understand there's been a time change, which may create a couple of issues with some council members.
The plan commission meeting, they don't have, they don't have any items for action by the plan commission, so the workshop will begin promptly at four o'clock. So, if you were planning to come after the plan commission meeting, the plan commission meeting won't be held, so it'll start right at four o'clock. It's a workshop, it's not an action item. I, we absolutely want the council to be there, because it's a very important issue for you. The sooner you can get arrived, the better. That's all I can say, but it is, without the plan commission agenda, it will speed things up a little bit.
As we have indicated before, it does create issues for some folks when we move things up earlier than five o'clock.
I mean, alternatively, we still have a whole week away. I mean, if you want to move it back a half hour or something like that, I mean, sometimes a light plan commission agenda can get done in a half hour. We could move it back to 4:30, just to let everybody know. It's, I think it's just an issue of just amending the notice. We could do something like that if you think it would help you. We'll have to let the landmarks and plan commission know.
I'd ask that council members if they'd like to change it or not.
Well, as I indicated earlier, I mean, it, you know, there's another meeting that the day before at four o'clock, and with this scheduled at four o'clock, I mean, you know, we all understand that this position is important, but we also have other jobs, so to speak, that sometimes take precedent. So, you know, I'll do, I can do my best to get there as quickly as possible, but I can definitely assure you I won't be there at four o'clock.
We can do either. We can move it, have it moved to 4:30, or just leave it open at four, and you get there whenever you can. I don't know who else is involved.
That's my issue, too. I'm going to be late either way. I didn't know about this until two weeks ago, and, I mean, they've continued to have a couple workshops and meetings that weren't on the schedule, that are interrupting some other things. But I, yeah, I'm going to be there late if it's at four, I'm going to be there late if it's at five.
My question is, if we'd like, if we move it to 4:30, does that help at terms of you being able to be there?
I'll miss less of it.
Or you can't be there, period?
No, I'll be there. I'll be there, I'll just miss less of it than...
Yes, Mr. Fitzgerald, we'll just miss less of it.
Let's move it to 4:30.
I would agree.
It is, it is important. We've been talking about this for some time out there, and Fitzgerald hasn't been here before on this, so we'll try that rather than going to five, because there are some other people involved, too. So, we're going to ask that it doesn't start till 4:30.
Very good. We can take care of that, thank you.
Okay with that?
Sure, sure, thank you.
Get there when you can, so. All right, the workshop on special events, January 14th at 4:45. That could be enough time? That means it will be an hour.
That's what we were planning it to be, an hour. I think that it can be done in an hour. I think we've got a pretty well-organized agenda for you to take a look at, and we'll get it to you in advance as much as we can to give you a feel for what we have.
Okay.
And did you reach out to Wendy Hillsburg?
She was part of our first meeting, yes.
Okay.
Very, very helpful.
Okay.
Will she be there that night?
She better be. They doubled it.
I'll make sure that the board directs her to be at that meeting.
Yeah, because part of the issue is, I mentioned last time, this is where marketing meets production. So, we need to have the marketing people, as well as the production people in the room. Okay, joint workshop with common council, planning commission, redevelopment authority, vision of riverfront development, January 28th at 4:45.
Okay.
Anything else in the way of workshops people have in mind at this point in time?
Just a question at vision of the riverfront. Are you anticipating having somewhat of a draft plan that council can look at and planning commission? Or are you just looking at a discussion of the riverfront? I guess, you know, the RDA's obviously been working on it, and now we've approved some projects along there, so just kind of what you're looking at, Mr. Davis?
What we have right now, we have the existing request proposal that we sent out from Marion. We have two proposals, and it included design criteria. We'll be able to review those criteria, see if those need to be modified at all. We also have our existing plan development ordinance and how it could be applied to that neighborhood. But I think that if you're looking at something that addresses the entire riverfront, we really just have the comprehensive plan, and that was probably more general than the council might want at this point in time. So, we targeted Marion for some specific design requirements, but not the entire river corridor.
Okay, might be helpful, though, with a couple of council members, and I've only seen it briefly, maybe just to do an overview of that whole comprehensive plan would be good.
I think you're right.
Good, thank you.
As a follow-up, I asked to put this on for this workshop, and I think it goes to the fact that what do we want that riverfront to look like in the next 25, 50, 100 years? And what we don't want to do is piecemeal development. We don't want to have a mixture of this, that, look, and so forth. I think we're striving for what, it's a gateway to our city. It's our most valuable asset, and I think we, as I said before, we have to be very prudent in how we move forward on this property. So, I would envision this as just kind of a, bit of a brainstorming session, too, from different entities. What do we envision? I was recently doing, I saw the Riverwalk in Augusta, charge, and then we're down to Milwaukee, and these communities treat this water as the asset it is. They are very strict with what happens there, and I think it shows in these communities.
Any other comments? If not, thank you. Okay, that'll take us to forty here. There are three things, and we'll take them one at a time. Mr. Cummings has asked to be put on the agenda here, creation of arts and beautification committee.
Thank you, Mayor Tower. This is something that, I'm looking at our municipal code, which was revived back in July of 2012. We do have a public arts advisory committee identified, and as I've talked to Mr. Roloff and so forth, it would be good to get this activated. We might want to incorporate elements of taking root and other things. And this goes back to my comment about the bid, that there should be some coordination in what happens on Main Street with the flower pots, the planting, the landscaping. As you come into the city, you know, on South Park, the Parks Department does a nice job[1656.16] in the entrance there. And again, I've had the, I've been lucky to be in a lot of different communities in my career, and some of these big communities or small communities, they invest a lot in the quality of life. In this case, the, are the community. It can be how you landscape your parks and your entryways and your main corridors. It can be things such as murals, historical markers and monuments. We've got a, one of the largest inventories of historic statues in the state and this city. They were all pretty much donated by Colonel Hicks from Northwestern, but they're, they're just sort of there. And I think we've all seen them, but they're just there. And what I'm looking at, we, we have this in the code that we activate it and get this, get this going. I've been approached by citizens who have, who have asked for this. Mr. Davis, we recently had a group get together to do some work at Emmeline Cook, working with Neighbor Works, the school board as far as beautification of those grounds. And I think that's the direction, direction we should go, but we need a group in place that can really, that needs some teeth, too. So that's why I'm asking that we, we get this up and running, get people on it, someone from staff appointed to oversee it. But I think it's time that we, we move on this.
Are you saying such as staff member, Alan Davis?
Who, there, it identifies, I believe there should be somebody from the staff that, just like other boards and commissions. Am I correct?
Well, I think the mural code that Mr. Cummings referenced did include that Arts and Beautification Committee or Advisory Committee. So that was really out of the planning department, which I'm responsible for.
We probably want to reword it somehow to be more inclusive, but.
Yes, that's, that's pretty narrowly focused, if you're looking at something quite a bit broader.
Right. And I have photos to support what I'm talking about, so.
Yeah. Couple of comments. One, I understand kind of the general concept, but I think you'd almost have to think about a different committee than, I mean, a different makeup of their.
Right.
Something much broader. That, that's very limited. So I do have that concern, that somebody have to work on it with the folks and planning.
We have to rewrite.
With the folks and planning. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I'll come back to an issue that, that's come up, that is related to this and yet not related to that, in that we have like 25 boards and commissions that we have here in the city. About 18 of them have council reps, plus the mayor's on a number of other committees, so it goes to, well, into the, into the 20s. I'm getting comments consistently over the last month and a half from people that were having trouble getting citizens to the committees, and even council members are having trouble making meetings. And so quorums are being hard to find, you know, hard to get. Communication between the council and the committees is becoming an issue on some committees. Last year, I sort of saw this thing coming, and I asked that we have a workshop, and we had a workshop, and basically we didn't eliminate any committee, but we still said we want council members on those committees, and we didn't, basically didn't take them off much. So I think as we add committees, we have to think about it in terms of council members, what are we willing to do and how much can we do, given the other demands and, in life, of which there are a number. So somehow, now that we gotta deal with the totality of this thing, because I have no authority to tell citizens that they have to go or they don't have to go, but that's an issue, and it's, it's a challenge for, for council members at times, too. So, and the third area that it's a, a challenge for is for staff, because we're, our staff is getting thin, and these committees take a lot of time for a staff member, so it's like adding another piece to their job. So in essence, by each committee we add and have a council or have somebody, the more we expect of them, the more we've added to the job description without adding any resource. So I don't know where that, that comes in. It's just kind of a general concern I have. I don't know if we have to go back and revisit it or workshop again, but I do know that getting quorums and getting the liaison set up is becoming a, an issue, and everybody says it's the mayor ultimately makes the point, but actually council does. You know, why don't you call these people and get them quorum, or get rid of them and hire somebody else? There aren't many applications coming in, folks, so I'm not sure where that leaves us, but maybe when it, it comes up, we can discuss it. It's also food for thought for people, how we deal with that issue. If we have a committee or commission, it ought to operate as a committee or a commission, and it ought to be able to function, and ought to have the resource that it needs. So we gotta think about that, as well as just saying it's a great idea to have it, and I, I understand that, and that's, and maybe it's a better idea than some we have now. And that, that may be the case. But I tried to look at it last year, and we didn't, we didn't make any real progress other than commit ourselves to it, but it's becoming an, an issue that falls somewhat in, in the mayor's lap. As you saw, we eliminated somebody tonight. That came out of it, and there's four or five more, plus some other resignations. So I do want that to be part of the discussion when we do it. So we do need a good definition. We gotta think about how many people, I don't, how many people were supposed to be on this commission originally?
It's five voting members. Two citizens, one plan commission member, one from landmarks, a council member, director of community developments, or designate, shall serve as a coordinator. I think we have to read, we have to redraft this whole thing.
But I also think we have to think about if we're asking people on another committee to be part of this committee too, in terms of the citizens and the others.
Their time.
We gotta give that some thought. So it's related, and yet it's not related to the, the purpose. I understand where you're coming from and the idea and the concept, so we need to keep the other things in mind. Okay? You okay with that one?
Yeah, I just don't want this to be, you know, if it lingers for 12 months, I think there's, there's a lot of need for this. I've been approached by a lot of citizens, and again, you know, back up my, my comments with, with photos. I mean, what other communities are doing, and, you know, I would like to have people come to our downtown to look at plantings, for example, that have a wall factor. There's more to Main Street than pub crawls, and I think that those type of things attract people to communities. Again, it's the whole quality of life, and so I just don't want this to, you know, flounder for 12 months.
One thing I'd ask is that we, as these people come, you keep a list of their names, because they'll be good candidates to be on, on the committee. Sometimes people have ideas for committees, but they have no time to participate.
I've already got some volunteers. I've got some volunteers.
That's good, if we get, because that's, that's important, so, okay. Okay, Status Enforcement at the Pioneer, Mr. Cummings.
Again, I just really asked Mayor, Mr. Roloff to explain what's happened since we toured the Pioneer when we still had soft water a couple months ago, and there were a lot of violations and so forth. So can you just update us as to what's happened between us and the owner of the property?
A letter was sent to the property owner indicating that, basically, inspection had been done from off the property site, noted some corrections, asked for permission to go onto the property to make a more full inspection of the property. There's been no response to that letter. Currently, our office is gathering all of the information that we can gather from the various departments inspections, police department, fire department, any other departments that have information pertaining to that property, to review and with an eye toward nuisance abatement action. Typically, what we would do in that case is, we would do a draft of the complaint, send a letter to them saying, here's our draft complaint, we intend to file it unless you provide some type of plan or response to us within so many days. If that would also be ignored, we would then file an action. But we're currently at that gathering information and review stage.
Thank you. The reason I think it's important is to let the citizens know that we are taking steps to correct this, because we've had, we've all heard over the past seven, eight, nine years, why don't we do something? And we're finally doing something, but it's a very complicated process to get action, so, thank you.
Appreciate you. You're pushing that, because we've made some progress there. Okay, Status of Saldust Days, payment, Mr. Cummings.
Okay, this is my last one. Just would like to know where we stand as far as collecting, what's due to the city for Saldust Days.
I spoke with Ms. Schmidt last week, and we received an additional $6,000 payment last Friday, I believe. Their balance is slightly over $3,000. Ms. Schmidt believes that she will have it paid in full by, by Christmas. She's still collecting from some of their vendors, and that's, that's really what's holding her up. Soon as she has money in her account, then she'll forward it to us.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else in there? If not, we'll move back to citizen statements to council, second opportunity for any citizens that would like to come forward. I don't know that I see any citizens, so I probably don't have to go through it, but if any citizens would like to come forward, I will go through the, the routine. No one's coming forward, so I'll move on to city manager announcements and statements.
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, takes us to motion to go into closed session, so I'm gonna ask the deputy mayor to provide us with a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that following the adjournment of this meeting, the common council for the city of Oshkosh may convene in the closed session pursuant to Section 19.85, Paren 1, Paren G, the Wisconsin statutes conferred with legal counsel, who will give legal advice concerning strategies to be adopted in regard to litigation in which the city is involved pertaining to claims for excessive assessment for properties located at 950 South Coler Street and 315 Murdoch Avenue in the city of Oshkosh, Walgreens Company.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on the motion to go into closed session.
Pat?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curried Seven?